Okay, we're gonna call our meeting to order. Welcome, everyone, tonight to our council meeting. We're gonna have a roll call by our city clerk, Marcy Killian.
The record will reflect that all members are present.
Our pledge of allegiance tonight will be led by council member Coles, and we'll have an invocation tonight by Pastor Charlie Bradshaw with North Coast Church. So if you want to come up and we'll stand for the pledge.
Let's pray. Dear God, we do pray for your blessing upon this city, this community of Vista. And we just pray as a people that we will reach out to each other, we will accept each other, we will care for each other as a community. And I thank you for each of the council members. We thank you for their hard work, their commitment, their dedication to making Vista the very best city possible. And I just pray that you'll give them, not just tonight, but in the days, weeks, and months ahead, great wisdom, discernment, judgment, as they face the various issues in front of them. And we just pray that even within disagreement, that there will be a unity of spirit and purpose among them. And above all, we just pray that your will be done in all things. Amen.
In accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buenos Sanitation District will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to Buenos Sanitation District Ordinance 2006-1. The next thing on our agenda is the approval of our agenda by City Manager Patrick Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. Since publishing the agenda, there were changes made that were necessary to the language of the Successor Agency Resolution, which is Item D1. So it's Exhibit 1 to Item D1, which is the issuance of the 2015 Tax Allocation Refunding Bonds. The changes were made, and each of the members received a revised resolution, as well as there was a resolution placed in the public book out front.
Okay. We did have a closed session today, and Assistant City Attorney Jonathan Stone will bring us on a closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. One item was considered in closed session, existing litigation, and that was Rojoian Vista versus Massey European Imports. And in closed session, the City Council voted unanimously to engage Riches Watson-Gershon to represent the city in that matter. That's the end of the report.
The next thing, we have a proclamation, and I'm gonna come down there and read it, declaring October 17th through October 19th, 2014, to be Nights of Columbus Tootsie Roll Drive Days in the city of Vista. So I'm gonna come down there and read it. Up and stand up here with us, and I'm gonna read this proclamation for you. It says, "Whereas the Nights of Columbus will hold their 27th Annual Tootsie Roll Drive on October 17th, 18th, and 19th, 2014, and whereas over 550 councils of the Nights of Columbus in California will conduct their annual candy drive in communities across the state to raise funds for intellectually disabled children and adults in California, whereas all the money collected locally will be donated to Downstown, a nonprofit organization with a series of residential homes in North County for adults with developmental disabilities such as Down Syndrome, and whereas intellectually disabled citizens need the support of the public so they can develop and be productive contributing members of society. Whereas the Vista City Council offers its sincere appreciation and support of all involved with its candy drive and commend them for their efforts to help others. Now therefore, the mayor and members of the Vista City Council do hereby proclaim October 17th, 18th, and 19th, 2014 as Nights of Columbus Tootsie Roll Drive Days in the city of Vista, and we urge all citizens to support this important fundraising activity to help intellectually disabled children and adults in Vista and all throughout California." And I think they have some Tootsie Rolls today to sell, if I'm correct. Did you have anything that you wanted to add to that?
I'd like to thank Fraser Farms, Northgate Market, Stater Brothers, Albertsons, and Walmart for their kind permission to allow us to solicit in front of their stores this weekend. Thank you.
And then I think maybe we might sell some Tootsie Rolls to our council and all of us.
Come around.
Come around, and we have...
Absolutely. Here, you wanna sell one?
Okay, if my council want... Would the council like to come down here? And we're gonna do the presentation of certificates to the graduates of the City of Vista 12th Leadership Academy. Okay, so the city of Vista is proud to present... There's still two in there. It's okay, we can go on while they're selling Tootsie Rolls here. The city of Vista is proud to present the 12th Vista Leadership Academy's graduating class. The academy provides insight to the public on how their local government works and the responsibilities and operations of each department. Our first academy was conducted in 2007, and that session was an overwhelming success, and every subsequent academy has been even better. So the objective of our academy is to make participants be better informed with an accurate knowledge of the city's many responsibilities and functions, and a clearer understanding of municipal government. So congratulations over here to our fall 2014 participants comprised of both residents and business leaders in Vista. Now, some of the graduates can't be here tonight, but I'm gonna call everybody's name anyway, if they're here or not. But if you're here, please come up, as I call your name, to receive your certificate, and please remain standing, and then we'll do a group photo. So we will start with, and then John Aguilera, Deputy Mayor John, has your certificates there. So I'll start with Charlene Barron. How will we do this? Let's see, we do... Yeah, come this way, yeah, that's good. Then we can all shake your hand. The CD line here. Okay, next is Ashley Bedard. No, stay up here, Charlene. Congratulations, Ashley. Ron Bessino. Congratulations, Ron. Barbara Coleman. Is Barbara here? Don't see Barbara, okay. Brenda Dotz. Nikki Hobson. Congratulations, Nikki. Fella by Richard Hobson. Matthew Leder. Is Matthew here? Nope, okay. Dinah Lency. Anna Martinet. Is that right, Martinet? Kathy Martinet. Dennis Morel. Morel? Not here. Is Martha here, Martha Morel? She's not here either, okay. And Sophie Newsom? No? Bill Newsom? He's not here either, maybe? Nathan Powers? Yeah. Mary Roof? Right here, don't see her. April Rosemeyer? You're welcome, thank you. Jaleen Schatzenbaum. Lisa Stinkbell? Lisa, no. And so must be Scott isn't here either, Scott Stinkbell, no? Okay, then Ed Simpson? Nope. Last but not least, DeeDee Timmons. And this is our class of the fall of 2014. So congratulations, class. We actually will be starting another one of our classes, our leadership classes, after the first of the year, January or February, so if you are interested. And some of you students, it's very interesting, they go through and learn a lot about our city. They, you know, visit the fire department, and public works, and the jail, and all sorts of things. So if anybody's interested, then let us know, okay? Let's see, the next. Next is our consent calendar, Items C1 through C7, and the recommendations of the consent calendar will be enacted in one motion unless an item is removed from the calendar. Any member of the public may remove an item by submitting a request-to-speak card to the city clerk. Items removed from the consent calendar will be considered immediately following adoption of the calendar. So I don't see anything from the public that's polled. Is there anything that wants to be pulled from our council? And if not, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt the consent calendar.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second, please cast your votes. The motion passes unanimously. The next thing on our agenda is our discussion items. Items scheduled for discussion generally require detailed explanation by the staff and an agency member input. So tonight, we have one successor agency discussion item, issuance of 2015 Tax Allocation Refunding Bonds. Exciting subject. Yes, Mr. Nielsen, sorry.
My name is Daniel Nielsen. I'm the Director of Finance and City Treasurer for the city of Vista. The item before you tonight is in regards to the issuance of a 2015 Tax Allocation Bonds for the purpose of refunding or refinancing some existing redevelopment debt. As you're probably all aware, in 2011, as part of its budget preparation actions, if you will, the state of California abolished redevelopment agencies. Once redevelopment agencies were dissolved, successor agencies were created for the purpose of winding down the business of the former redevelopment agencies. This city council also sits as the successor agency board. One of the items that was a consequence of the dissolution of redevelopment is that successor agencies could no longer issue any new debt related to the former redevelopment agency or the successor agency. There's two exceptions to that rule. The first exception is if you have a debt issuance that has a large balloon payment involved with a, you know, definite date of maturity. And the other issue instance is if a successor agency can demonstrate to the state that by refunding or refinancing the debt, there can be debt service savings over the life of the bonds. The bonds that we are, or the debt that we are looking at refunding, fall into both of those categories. The first one is a 2010 bond anticipation note that was a taxable issue, that was issued in 2010, for the purpose of primarily financing the Paseo Santa Fe project. At the time that that debt was issued, the plan was that the redevelopment agency would buy up parcels of land, that land would be improved, and then sold to developers, and then the proceeds of those land sales would be used to repay a large portion of the bond anticipation notes. That is why the 2010 bands were only issued with a seven-year maturity date, just long enough to get the project up and running, and recycle those land sales, and then retire the bond anticipation notes with the proceeds of the land sale, and perhaps an issuance of a longer-term debt of a much lesser amount. Well, the dissolution of redevelopment agency, of the redevelopment agency, kind of threw a wrench into that whole works. Nonetheless, we still have a $24 million bond anticipation note that has a maturity date of March 1st, 2017, and that falls into the category of a debt that has a balloon payment, if you will, associated with it. So we are allowed to issue debt on a longer-term basis to take out that item. The other debt that we're talking about is we have three tax allocation bonds that have been issued in the past. Were done on a tax-exempt basis. We have some 1998 tax allocation bonds, some 2001 tax allocation bonds. Those two issuances primarily were used for the Vista Village project. We also then have a 2005 tax allocation bond issue that was issued to refund or refinance some 1995 tax allocation bonds. The 2005 bond is not callable until September 1st of 2015. It had a 10-year call protection on it. The 1998 issue and the 2001 issue can be called at this time because the call protection date has already passed. We are anticipating on issuing some 2015 tax allocation bonds in two series. The first series will be used to retire, will be done on a taxable basis, and be used to retire the 2010 tax, tax, bond anticipation note, I'm sorry. The other piece, the 2015 issue, will be used to retire the three tax allocation bonds that were previously issued. There are two resolutions before you tonight, one authorizing the taxable portion of the 2015 tax allocation bonds, and another resolution to authorize the non-taxable portion of the tax allocation bonds. You were provided an updated resolution before the council meeting. The reason for that has to do with certain aspects of federal tax law as it relates to tax-exempt debt. And what the rule is, is that when you're dealing with tax-exempt debt, you're only allowed to do something called an advance refunding one time on a debt issuance. What an advance refunding is, is when you issue new debt to retire an existing piece of debt, and you're issuing that debt prior to the call date of the debt being retired. So you're doing it in advance of when it can actually be retired. So you have to issue the new tax-exempt debt, it goes into an escrow account, and it sits there for a period of time until the debt being retired comes available to be called, and then you use the new debt to retire the old debt. Well, upon researching back through, going back through the 2005 bond issue, which refunded the 1995 bond issue, which advanced refunded a 1992 bond issue, we determined that there was about $2 million of the 2005 issue that did not qualify for an advance refunding because it had already gone through an advance refunding. I know this is very complicated and perhaps a little confusing, I have a little trouble following it myself, but regardless, what that really means is we had to peel off about $2 million of the 2005 issue that we thought we were gonna do non-tax exempt, and put it over with the taxable piece that's being done. That's kind of the brief explanation. So anyway, I do have our financial advisor, Terry Moss, from First Southwest here. I have our underwriter from Stiefel, and we also have bond counsel available to answer any questions that the city council or successor agency board may have.
Questions? Deputy Mayor Aguilera.
So I just have a question about that advance refunding.
Yes.
So we're issuing that in advance because we can't call that particular issue yet. Obviously, interest accumulates during that time?
Yes. What you have to do is, the 2005 issue is callable September 1st of 2015. So we're really issuing it six or seven months prior to then we can call it. And yes, you are correct, you have to issue debt that is sufficient enough to retire the debt being called in the future, and service the debt service payments in the interim. In this case, though, because there's a debt service payment on March 1st of 15, and then the next one is September 1st of 15, the day that it can be called, the impact of that is really very minimal.
Okay, thank you.
Council member Coles.
First of all, Mr. Nielsen, I want to compliment you for taking us through a very complicated explanation, and I admire you for keeping track of all those various funds. My question is, will this have any effect on our budgeting process in the coming year? Or is this basically in a separate category from what we have to budget for with our discretionary funding?
This really has no, will have no negative impact on the general fund. If anything, it will have a slight positive impact, and let me explain. All these items that we're talking about right now are really dealing with successor agency items, and we're taking debts that are on the current ROPS schedule that this board approves every six months, and we're tossing out old debt, and we're replacing it with new, more efficient debt. Now, when existing redevelopment tax increment is used to pay those items on the ROPS, there's, we've gotten to the point where there is money left over, and that falls into the bottom of, we call it the bottom of the pool, or the bottom of the waterfall. And whatever is left over, every six-month period after paying the enforceable obligations and the pass-throughs and everything else, the leftover money gets distributed to what are called the taxing agencies, which is the city, the county, the school districts, all those, all those people or all those agencies that participate in the 1% property tax pie that gets collected on the tax roll. So any time that you can do something to reduce the debt service burden that comes out of, you know, the money that's being paid through the ROPS, if you save a dollar there, that's an additional dollar that falls down into that pool, of which then the city's general fund benefits 14 to 18 cents on the dollar on. So if anything, by doing this, we're gaining efficiency, we're lowering the annual debt service load, that's the only reason the state of California would let us do it, and as a byproduct of that, the money falling into the pool at the bottom is larger, and therefore, then the city's general fund gets a larger piece of that.
Thank you. That's the answer that everybody wants to hear. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Aguilera.
When I met with the city manager, we discussed bond ratings, or the city's rating, in this case, I guess the successor agency.
Successor agency.
By doing this advance funding, does that have a potential risk of affecting our rating?
I don't think so, because we are replacing existing debt with new debt that's funded from the very same tax increment money. And once again, we're actually lowering the debt burden, if you will, against that tax increment money, so I don't think it would...
I'm just concerned about the six or eight months, nine months, that we're floating it, or, I guess we're not floating it.
Yeah. No, I understand, no, that will not be an issue.
Okay.
I think if I might add, from a rating agency perspective, though, they'd like to see the balloon payment...
Sure.
...go away and have the debt spread out over a number of years, which should, if anything, help.
That is true.
On term, sure, yes.
Yeah, the rating agencies contact us, you know, once or twice a year, and we sit down and have a phone call with them, and they ask questions, and one of the things that's been on their mind for, you know, ever since 2010 is, oh, well, what are you guys gonna do about that 2017 maturity for $24 million? When are you gonna take care of it? So now we can tell them we're taking care of it.
Okay. Make a motion.
Yeah, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept staff's recommendation on resolution to refinance, let me see where I can find it now. The notes from... Is it gonna be the same? Authorizing the issuance and sale of tax allocation refunding bonds to refinance the outstanding 2010 taxable bond anticipation notes of the former Community Development Commission, and second, authorizing the issuance and sale of tax allocation refunding bonds to refinance outstanding tax allocation bonds of the former CDC.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, and I see no further discussions, so please cast your ballots or votes. That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for making it so simple. Complicated thing. We have no public hearings tonight, and so the next thing on our agenda are oral communications. Our first person is Renee Glasbaugh.
Greetings, Mayor. City council members and staff.
City council members and staff. So we'll remember with broken hearts, Nick Hart, 22, loved by family and friends, died by a DUI teenage drunk driver traveling the wrong direction, SR 56, May 17, 2013. Jacob Greenwall, 20, loved by family and friends, was left to die on the sidewalk after his shift. He was a courteous McDonald's worker. The killer went on to buy more alcohol, as seen by civilians camera. Jamie Midlam, 25, was killed by a wrong way DUI on December 2012, loved by family and friends. Vinnie Ziffro Jr., 20, loved by family and friends, was killed by a DUI teen driver who left Vinnie to die. Also remembering aspiring students, Amber DeWah, 14, of Escondido, murdered by an evil man, now in prison. Also remembering Chelsea King, 17, and aspiring student murdered by an evil man, also in prison, the same man who murdered Amber and Chelsea. The Highway Patrol reported from August 1st to October 13th, 2014, there were eight DUI crashes with injuries and 57 DUI arrests, no crashes. Total DUI arrested 65 on Highway 78. Near the 902 South Santa Fe Avenue, 711, there were 28 DUIs from 91 to 105. In Vista, there were 44 DUIs from 81 to 1013. Thank you.
Chuck and Marilyn Abeta.
My mom, we're actually representing Danny's Donuts and my name's Chuck and this is my mom Marilyn and we felt it necessary to come here and at least inform you folks. I know some of you have been down to our shop and we really appreciate your support. But at this time, you know, I don't think we're going to be able to continue absorbing the impact that the construction on Santa Fe has had on us and my mom.
Speak right into the mic so we can hear you, okay? We can't hear you real well.
Actually, I'll finish after she reads her letter.
Okay.
Thank you for listening. I am the owner of Danny's Donuts. I've been proud to have a donut shop in Vista for the past nine and a half years. People are great and I think we contribute to the city. We are sorry that right now things are impossible to keep on as we have been. During the week, we only taken enough to pay the help and not including what's in the overhead of our business. So because of what I'm going through at this time, I've decided to sell the business. If my husband were alive, we would see it through, but I know he would not want to run a business that's losing money. So I'm here to tell the city of Vista, thank you for your kindness, but because you don't want to make our city, because you want to make your city beautiful, talking about Santa Fe, we will have to sacrifice our shop. We have lost business and I can't see us recovering. I hope and pray that we can sell the shop for some profit and then I'll retire to be able to visit all my great grandchildren. So that's, I just wanted to thank you people.
This is a really sad time and I don't expect everybody to understand. Many of you are aware that my dad passed away January 6th of last year and, you know, some of us were able to step up and try to carry on, you know, what he loved so much and, you know, we learned a lot in the last, you know, almost two years now. Last year, we pretty much started from scratch because although he had a part-time baker, you know, none of us really knew how to operate the donut shop and, you know, between my nephew and then myself, we figured things out. And we knew based on our experience from last year that, you know, business was going to drop off as the weather warmed up and summer hit, that we were going to experience a 15, maybe even sometimes 20% drop in business. Currently, all the numbers that I have, you know, we're closer to 50% down, you know, in preparing for that drop in business. You know, my mom, for the prior months, was only taking $500 a month out of the shop. And we were building up what I like to think were the reserves in order to get us through the tough times. And those, the reserves have been depleted quite some time ago. She's going into her savings and I know that we've put it out to some representatives of the city. Patrick, thank you for coming out. John, I know you've supported us over the years as probably all of you at times. We brought a couple of, a box of donuts. It may be, I'm not saying that we're going to close tomorrow or anything. We're going to begin the process of, you know, putting the place up for sale just because she can't afford, she can't, she can't see her entire savings depleted because of a project that's, you know, how many months out? I get different answers. You know, we know the projected, you know, timeframe, but we also know that, you know, how often does that happen? And our busiest time of year should be coming right about now and what we're experiencing is, we feel like a minimum security donut shop over there. We're all fenced in. We got a sign a half a block down the road, the other direction and that direction and those signs, although they were done with good intention, they're only visible to people that are still coming down the street. And the majority of our business, you know, is avoiding that street because our bread and butter is between 6:00 AM and 9:00 AM, you know, and between 6:00 and 9:00 AM, most people are in a little bit of a hurry. And a lot of our loyal customers will come sometimes, but not daily like they have in the past. So, you know, if anybody wants to see the numbers, you know, we're not hiding anything. We just, I can't watch my mom, you know, continue to go into her savings the way she has been, all to keep this place open, which we feel like, you know, it's not going to be what we would like it to be. So anyway, thank you very much for listening to our calls.
Oh, thank you for coming. I am so sorry for, my grandson used to come there, he works somewhere else now, but works with San Marcos. We used to come every morning for donuts down there, so from the Sonic, he used to come down and get your donuts every day.
Out of respect for the city and especially the people that have been very loyal to us, we didn't want to just have you all find out, you know, you're kidding me, you know, so.
Thank you and we wish you.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, we wish you your best on the sale of your business. Okay, J.C. Winn.
Hello, Mayor and council and staff. As most of you know, my name's J.C. and I just want to thank everybody up here for all the hard work you're doing for our city, moving it forward with all the new construction that's going on. And I'd like to thank you also for this forum, for people like me who are out in our city and know people and might have a little bit of influence on, you know, the way people think. And I just want to, at this time, endorse the mayor and the councilmen that are up for reelection to be brought back to our council so we keep moving forward and make Vista what it really is, it's a great city. I've lived here my whole life and we're just, we're grateful for all the stuff that we're, it's been a rough road. I know everybody's been rough for the last, maybe almost a decade now, but I think with your leadership and, you know, our help, our city's going to be even bigger and better as we move forward. So thanks for this opportunity to be able to come out here and publicly say that Mayor Ritter and Councilman Aguilera and Councilman Coles, that I, J.C. Winn, want to personally endorse your reelection to this fine council. And after the councilman, I'd like to get a photo op with my new sign that I had made, so if you're available and thank you very much. And I just want everybody out there, all the city clubs, high school clubs, anybody that buys donuts, to get over to Danny's Donuts and get 10 boxes of donuts to help these guys because, you know, we need them too downtown. When we're all done, we'd all like to go to Danny's Donuts still and get some donuts, so. And Pepper Tree Frosty. Thank you.
Thanks, J.C.
Thank you, J.C.
Thank you.
Like the shirt, too.
Okay, so that takes us to our remarks and I will give you my little announcements first. If you came in, the Civic Gallery's Best Shop Photography exhibit opened this weekend, so take time to look at the photographs out there and the winning entries and other selections after our council meeting if you didn't get a chance when you came in. The Vista Historical Society is looking for volunteers for its booth at the Fall Antique Steam Engine and Tractor Show at the Antique Gas and Steam Engine Museum for the next two weekends. So if you can do that, if you're interested in helping, call their office, 760-630-0444. And I think, you know, you can go up there and help them in their booth. It's really kind of a cool place to go and see that show, so. Other thing, the Chambers Business Expo is November 5th coming up in the Vista Business Park. More than 100 exhibitors and 2,000 attendees are expected to attend and the Chamber is now taking booth and attendee reservations online at vista-chamber.org. And one last thing, just a reminder, if you notice graffiti or a pothole or a burned-out street light, we need your help. Call our city hotline, 760-639-6177 and then let Public Works know. And so together we can all keep our city beautiful and clean. And so we need your help in finding potholes, graffiti and burned-out streetlights. So if you notice any of those things, be sure and call us, okay? One more time, 760-639-6177. And I will go down to Johnny Aguilera next for anything you have to say.
Yeah, well, appreciate what J.C. had to say there and it's really nice to hear that, especially after the previous speaker, because it's really a shame to see such a long-time business here in Vista, you know, just right there next door to Pepper Tree. I remember growing up here, you know, getting donuts there and going to Pepper Tree and those are, you know, just long-time establishments here in Vista. They're, I mean, almost historical sites, almost, you know. Unfortunately, you know, they're not, it doesn't appear like they're going to be able to hold out, so that's not the reason for our downtown redevelopment. Really, our downtown redevelopment, the idea is to, you know, bring more business, bring more people to our downtown and help businesses like Danny's Donuts. And I know that down the road, that's what's going to happen, so I wish they would be able to hold out. So if you can, like J.C. said, go, you know, go to their business, buy some donuts. But you will see some major changes in our downtown and they are going to be for the positive. And like anything else, sometimes you have to, you know, take a step back and sacrifice a little bit before the good stuff really comes to the surface. So that's all I would like to say.
Yeah, it's true, but they can't hold out because those apartment units over there would for sure buy donuts every morning, you know, so if they could just hold out for a little while longer, so. Councilmember Campbell.
Nothing to report this evening.
Coles.
Thank you. And J.C., again, you always bring us news on your T-shirts, so we know what's going on in Vista by what you wear. Thank you. And also thank you for your kind words.
Council, oops, sorry.
No, I have another announcement to make and again, I was reflecting on the comments about Danny's Donuts because it is sad to see a business like that, that is so, such a long-term business establishment, going through what it's gone through and knowing that in who knows how many more months could be a magnet for.
The number one recipes, too.
Yeah, I know. For hundreds, hundreds of morning coffee and donut folks. So if we could do anything in our clubs, groups, organizations to keep them going for the next few months, it might be worth it to the city. But the other more formal announcement I have to make is I received a press release from the Regional Solid Waste Agency. It is made up of the cities of Adelmar, Encinitas, National City, Poway, Solana Beach and Vista. And every year, there's an amount of money that is put into a fund to be shared by the cities based on their waste disposal capacities that comes back to the city for the purpose of our passing along educational programs in our city, in our schools to promote waste management in a good way. And this includes recycling education, e-waste, litter abatement programs and other related activities. And this year, Vista is receiving a check for $40,680. So hopefully we'll have a good plan for how to spend that money to reach the most of our city and educate them for good waste management. And this is in conjunction with EDCO, who is our provider for waste management. Thank you.
Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also wanted to reiterate how sad I am to hear about Danny's Donuts. They are, have been a staple in Vista forever. I love Danny's Donuts and if you could all smell this box of donuts sitting here next to me, how it made it to me completely full, I'm not sure what that meant, but I really hope that they can find a way to weather the storm of the construction because I agree that the construction of what we're doing in the redevelopment area down on Paseo Point is really going to be very beneficial to the community and I think it would help them if they can just hold out until it's finished. So they have fabulous donuts, so please try to go to Danny's. I just did, I wanted to say that Assistant City Manager, Ally Zimmerman, and I attended the League of Cities meeting yesterday where our discussion was on the water and the drought in California and some of the things that we might be facing if the drought continues and the severity that it has. And I think in our region, we've already hit probably the most severe level that there is and they're talking about further rationing of water. And I was commenting, and I don't know where else we'd be able to cut, and my family particularly with all of the cuts that we've already made. So just to be aware of your water restrictions and your landscaping and things like that, trying to help get through the drought. There was one comment made yesterday that it made sense, but it's something that I hadn't really given a lot of thought to, was that the amount of water that we import here into Southern California from other areas in California's earthquake environment, if we were to have a very serious earthquake here in Southern California and San Diego County region, we would be cut off from our water supply. And that was disturbing to me, which is why it was important that the San Vicente Dam raise that I attended a few weeks ago was important to have that built because it raised the amount of water that that reservoir here in East County can hold. And then there was another one yesterday morning at another dam to also improve the water storage that we can have there. We just need the rainfall to come and help fill those reservoirs up. But my takeaway from that was store some water. You just never know how long it'll be if, God forbid, we have another catastrophe or an earthquake, you want to have some water for your family. So that was something to keep track of and they're going to be giving out more information through the Metropolitan Water Authority as well as the Vista Irrigation District when we reach another level of restriction. So just keep an eye out for that. Also, I wanted to say thank you to Alta Vista Gardens for the Scarecrow Contest. I know that my colleagues and I were out there on Saturday judging the Scarecrow Contest and having, you know, a nice tour of the gardens and face painting and all that stuff that we were doing. It was not easy being a judge for the Scarecrow Contest, but I think we came up with a good one. And then the art contest downstairs, I was there Sunday for that as well and was able to help hand out awards. And if you haven't been through there and picked your favorite piece of art, please go through there and look at what they've done. They've done some really very beautiful pieces there. But there is one issue that I wanted to bring up to my council and I'm going to ask that we can bring something up to the council for discussion at a future date and have it on the agenda. I was contacted, and I don't know if my colleagues were, but I was contacted by a gentleman who runs an ice cream truck here in Vista and I've met with him and I've spoken with him on the phone. And there's an ordinance, my understanding is in Vista, that you cannot be selling on your ice cream truck past 7:00 PM. And this, in the summertime with daylight savings time, the sun doesn't go down until very late in the evening. And with the. very late in the evening, and with the amount of heat that we've had, this, this heat wave, having to shut down the trucks at 7:00, they really missed out on some selling, selling time. And then there's also an issue with some of the trucks not really following the ordinance. So, I wanted to see if I could get consensus with my council colleagues to bring this issue up for discussion, and perhaps change the ordinance, or rewrite the ordinance, to allow for later sales of ice cream trucks for the summer months, so that they're not missing out on an hour or two worth of sales. So, I, I don't know how that conversation would happen, or what the ordinance could be changed to, but I'd like the opportunity to bring that up and have a discussion.
Councilmember Aguilera.
Yeah, I'd like to say something in regards to that. I'd be willing to listen to that, but I'd also like to add to the discussion, that we require these ice cream salespeople to go through some sort of a background check, if they're going to be selling to our children. I think it's really important that there's some regulation there, because we are talking about primarily sales to, to children.
Absolutely, I think all of that, all of the details of what we would look for could be part of that discussion, and I agree with that one.
Councilmember Coles.
I, I had a conversation with that young man, too, and I agree that we need to have some sort of uniform approach to how we handle these sales, because as he indicated and I observed, some people don't follow our ordinance, he's been trying to at his own detriment, and, and Councilman Aguilera's suggestion is also on, on point. We need to have background checks on, on these people who are out in our, in our neighborhoods. So, yes, I would support bringing that.
Okay, and I agree with you also, because I also talked to that young man, and I agree that we should look at that, so we can put that on our future agenda?
Yes, we can.
Yes, we can, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, our city manager, Patrick Johnson, has some announcements.
Thank you, Mayor, I have two of them. As we've all experienced this year, fire season is year-round, it's not just in the September, October months, and the county has prepared a 30-second video, which we have available on our website at cityofvista.com, that takes you through the preparation process of what to take from your home and how to prepare, and so it's only 30 seconds, and so I'd encourage everybody in the audience to take time to check out that video online. Again, it's linked at our cityofvista.com website. And the second item is there are free flu shots this Saturday at the library, which is adjacent to us here at the Civic Center, from 1:00 to 3:00 PM in the afternoon for those who are nine years and older, and it's put on by the Palomar Pomerato Health Center. So, thank you.
Okay, yeah, and usually they cost $20, I think, so that's a, it's a deal. City Attorney, do you have anything? City Clerk, mercy, no? Amanda, no? Okay, with that. Oh, yes, you know what? What have we put, put the donuts on the, somebody put? We're going to put the donuts in the lobby, we do that, and then you guys will all eat the donuts, okay? And please support the donut shop for us. Okay, so we adjourned.